Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Shelby Township Planning Commission meeting, September 11th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Commissioner Moore, can you call the roll?
Yes. Acting Chairman Kasali is filling in for Chairman Moffett. He is out tonight. Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Ms. Meredith, Mr. Meredith is out. Ms. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Lowry?
Here.
Mr. Turner is absent. Mr. Appone is absent. And Acting Chairman Kasali, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there an approval of the agenda tonight?
Support.
Moved by Moore, support by Snyder. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And approval of the minutes from August 28th, 2023?
So moved. Support.
Moved by Snyder, support by Lowry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore, have we received any correspondence this evening?
No, we have not.
Okay, thank you. So tonight, we have three items on the agenda. The first item is Site Plan Number 23-31. Gina Trotman, Technical Group Incorporated for Burger King, 50787 Vandike Avenue, Parcel Number 23-07-21-226-029, located south of 23 Mile Road on the west side of Vandike Avenue. Building and site modifications to an existing site. Is the petitioner here to come and talk with us about the proposal? If you could sign in for us, please, with your name and address? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pete Crowley. I'm the owner of that Burger King site. And this gentleman is Tim, and he's an architect.
Okay.
Yep, Tim Morgan with Technical Group Inc.
Okay. Would you like to tell us a little bit about the project improvements that you have in place tonight?
Yep. So... The major thing for this site is we're just switching this over to a dual drive-through, which is kind of standard for most modern Burger Kings. So for our site plan, we're proposing to switch the west side drive-through to a dual drive-through with a single bypass lane. And I think overall, for this site, it kind of cleans things up anyway, makes the flow of traffic quite a bit better. Along with that, we have some landscape improvements that are going to go along with that, which are all kind of Burger King spec. They have like preference on what you're adding, the plantings, things of that nature. And then we also have quite a few... Exterior modifications to the elevation, so just bringing those up to Burger King specs as well, using their material choices, painting brick, removing some of the kind of older awning-style roofs that they have, and switching to wooden towers and modern signage, so things of that nature. Yep, I think that's it.
Okay. Seems like they're all enhancements that would be welcome in the township, and we appreciate that. I'll take it to the planner. Do we have any comments on this? Oh, it's Nick. Do we have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This site was first developed in 1978. It was developed as a Burger King, so clearly it's been successful. It's been there for a long time. They're doing some major facade modifications to the site, like they said, adding the second drive-through. That second drive-through does reduce the opportunity for two-way traffic at the rear of the site, but the way the site's set up, the depth of the site, the large site as it is, I don't see that being too major an issue for traffic on the site. With the facade modifications, they are making it more of a contemporary look. They're adding a little bit of metal siding, which will require Planning Commission approval, but with the small amount that it is, I think it adds to the site fairly well. With the age of this site, updating the facade gives the township the opportunity to bring it closer to our code requirements. In particular, I want to look at the landscaping there. The township requires a certain amount of trees to be planted for the street frontage and the parking spaces there. For the street frontage, five street trees are required, just make sure those are noted on the site plan. And then 12 interior parking lot trees are also required. So far, there are seven existing on-site, and five are proposed to remain with your site plan, so you're going to have to up that tree count a little bit to make it compliant with our standards.
Gotcha.
Besides that, most of my other comments are fairly straightforward. They can be fixed by just identifying them on the site plan, such as indicating the benchmarks, the surrounding zoning, indicating the right-of-ways in the site, removing those bumper blocks, which are not permitted in the township. And let's see. I also wanted to note on the signage you have with the application. So the signage is going to require a separate application to the Planning and Zoning Department. It can be done administratively, but I will say there's two signs proposed. This site is allowed one wall sign, the street frontage. So if you want to pursue that second sign, you'll have to seek a variance and provide a practical difficulty on why that second sign is needed. And the merchandising areas that are noted on the site plan, those are considered temporary signs in the township, and they're not permitted on sites that have the electronic changeable message board. So since your ground sign has that changeable LED message board, you won't be able to do any sort of temporary signage there. It's part of the township sign ordinance. With that, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. To the commissioners, do we have any comments, questions? No, seeing none? Well, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Move to approve Site Plan 23-31. Gina Trotman of Technical Group Incorporated for Burger King, located at 50787 Vandike Avenue, Parcel Number 23-07-21-226-029, located on the south side of 23 Mile Road on the... Excuse me. Located at the south of 23 Mile Road on the west side of Vandike Avenue. Building and site modifications to existing site. The approval is subject to submission of final plans addressing all department engineers and planning commission comments.
Support.
Motion by Snyder, support by Lowry. Roll call vote, Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we have a quorum. Congratulations. Thank you very much. So our second item is a Site Plan SLU Number 23-09. Mario Kezi, Kezi Shell Properties LLC, 1980 Auburn Road, Parcel Number 23-07-31-101-013, located at the southeast corner of Auburn Road and Dequender Road, proposed gas station and convenience store. And this is a public hearing tonight, and I will read how we handle public hearings at our meeting tonight. This is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for the Township Board evaluation. We are a recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. The Township Board will make the final decision on this special land use request. Let's see. At this time, do we have any comments from...
No, no comments. Are you ready for me to read the public hearing?
Yes, please.
Oh, great. Charter Township of Shelby. Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of a Site Plan Special Land Use. Applicant: Mario Kezi. Kezi Shalal Properties LLC, 2600 West Beaver Road, Big Beaver, excuse me, Suite 410, Troy, Michigan, 48084. Proposed use is a gas station and convenience store. Location is 1980 Auburn Road, southeast corner of Auburn Road and Dequender Road. Site Plan Number SLU Number 23-09. Civil number is 23-07-31-101-013. Legal description is as follows. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, September 11th, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building Boardroom, 52700 Vandike Avenue, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48316-5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the Site Plan Special Land Use. The application for the Site Plan use may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission in the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on August 23rd, 2023. There were 60 property owners, and two applicants were notified by first-class mail on August 22nd, 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. And at this time, I'd like to call the public hearing to order. Chairman, Secretary Moore, can you call the roll?
Oh, yes. Commissioner Snyder? Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Lowry?
Here.
Commissioner Appone is out, and Commissioner Chairman is absent. In his place is Commissioner or Chairman Acting Chairman is Kasali.
Yes.
And we're also... Who else is also absent is Chairman or Commissioner Meredith.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to ask our attorney if the publication meets all the legal requirements as stipulated in the local ordinance as well as the state statute.
Yes, Madam Chair, it does.
Thank you.
Very briefly, if I may?
Yes, please.
The use is under this parcel. This parcel is zoned A.C., too, which is covered by Section 3.14 of the Shelby Township zoning ordinance. This is an appropriate special land use request pursuant to Section 3.14(c), subject to Section 4.28, as well as special land use requirements set forth in Section 6.5.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the attorney? No, seeing none? Okay, at this time, I will explain the format for the public hearing. The petitioner or his representatives will give a presentation stating reasons for the request. Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will be opened to the public, and the petitioner may make concluding remarks. So at this time, is the petitioner looks like you're present and ready for your presentation.
I am, thank you very much. Jim Butler with PEA Group, address is 1849 Pond Run, Auburn Hills, Michigan. Subject parcel we're talking tonight is 1980 Auburn Road. The subject parcel is approximately 1.24 acres in size. It's currently zoned C2. We are proposing a single-story, 6,806 square-foot building with a drive-through. It'll have eight pumps and with a canopy of about 1,840 square feet. The site proposes to provide 25 parking spaces. On the screen, you'll see the subject site. It is to the east of Dequender Road and south of Auburn Road. Here's from the site plan. Again, the building, we're proposing a single-story, 25-foot-high retail building with a drive-through. Also have that canopy, which will sit to the west of the building. Here's the elevations of the building. Again, 25-foot-high building. Mainly, the materials are metal, metal siding, brick, brick veneer, glazing, and a limestone base. We have gone through Section 6.5 of your zoning ordinance for special land use, and we feel that we meet all those requirements, and ask for your recommendation for approval.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. So at this time, I will ask the commissioners if they have any questions for the petitioner. Seeing none, and this is seeing it's a public hearing, I will ask the public at this time if anybody would like to come up and speak on the project? Anyone from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. Thank you. To the planners, comments?
Thank you, Chairman Kasali. Chairman Kasali. This proposal in front of us has undergone a preliminary review, so all the comments that you have listed in your site plan review comments have been addressed. The only other issue on this site plan is variance will be required for the front yard setback along Dequnder Road. The property will be accessed off of Auburn Road and also Dequnder Road, and a cross-access agreement has been provided along with this application as well. The entire facade consists of brick, as Mr. Butler explained, on all four elevations, so they meet all the landscaping requirements. As far as the master plan compatibility, this is designated as a regional commercial note, so not only to serve the residents of the township, but also the surrounding neighborhood, you know, Rochester to the west. So I don't have any other comments. Very nice site plan. If you recall years ago, this was... This site was part of a light enforcement initiative. There was a single-story office building that was empty a number of years back that was owned by Rite Aid, that Rite Aid didn't know they even owned this property. So once they found out it was their building, they ended up demolishing the site and left it as part of the shopping center as well. So like my predecessor used to say, addition by subtraction in this case.
Okay, thank you for the comments. And does the petitioner wish to say anything more at this time?
At this time, no, I do not.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So move?
Support.
Moved by Moore, support by Snyder. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At this time, I would advise the commission that the recommendation must... Their recommendation must be based on the following standards. Compatibility with the adjacent land uses. Consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use. Compatibility with the natural environment. Consistent with the capacities of the public services and the facilities affected by the proposed use. Protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. The commission may now recommend approval, disapproval of the request, or table it to evaluate the information received this evening. Is there a motion on the table?
Ms. Chair?
Ms. Moore?
I'd like to recommend approval to the Township Board for Site Plan SLU Number 23-09 for Mario Kezi. Kezi Shalal Properties LLC, 1980 Auburn Road, Parcel Number 23-07-31-101-013, located at the southeast corner of Auburn Road and Dequnder for a fueling station and convenience store. The approval is based on the following. The proposed Site Plan Special Land Use is consistent with the recommendation in the 2017 Shelby Township Master Plan. Number two, the applicant has addressed the special land use standards in Section 6.5 and the conditions in Section 4.28. Gasoline self-service stations of the Township zoning ordinance. Number three, the Planning Commission supports the variance request and offers a favorable recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And number four, the site plans must comply with all the Planning Commission, Department and Engineering comments.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Moore, support by Mr. Snyder, and roll call vote. Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you very much. Do I have to adjourn the public hearing? All right, thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Number three on our agenda tonight is a Site Plan Number 23-29, Gary Gula Family LLC for the Greenbrier Estates. 12800 26 Mile Road, Parcel Number 23-07-02-200-029, located on the south side of 26 Mile Road, west of Shainer Road. 65 single-family units, preliminary review, and planned unit development. I see the petitioner is here signing in, so whenever you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Ben Aloya. I'm the attorney for the Gula Family LLC. The Gula family is actually here and present, led by Mr. Gary Gula, who's in the center there in the back. I also have Mr. Pete Snyder here, who's the engineer assisting with this development. As your packet indicates, we are in a preliminary review for PUD. We are seeking this review under the R1C residential standard. What we're proposing is 65 residential units for this development called the Greenbrier Estates. This parcel is 33.342 acres, and we are... This is located on the south side of 26 Mile, east of Jewel Road, and it's currently zoned and master planned R1. As we discussed in the packet, this property has wetlands. It currently has a pond, which we want to preserve, and through our development, we have two proposed detention ponds. This proposed development has open space of approximately 28.49%, which includes the existing pond, the two proposed detention ponds, which are about 2.12 acres, and 7.07 acres of proposed green space. Due to the limited buildable area, we believe that this development is viable if we can develop it under these standards and have an efficient use of the open space and land that we have. As it notes on our application, the units that we are proposing range from 10,400 square feet to 16,270 square feet, and all sites meet the 3:1 ratio. The average unit area is 12,083 square feet, and that's why we're necessarily moving under the R1C designation. We believe this property is unique because we have an ITC corridor on the west. We have a consumer property to the south, and there will be potentially a residential development to the east. But it is compatible with surrounding developments. For instance, the estates at Beacon Point and the village at Beacon Point are behind this development. Estates at Beacon Point is the Polte development now, which Mr. Penna developed. It's currently zoned R1B, and it was approved as a PUD. It has residential lots as small as 9,600 square feet and 8,400 square feet, which is smaller than what we're proposing here. And directly behind us is the village at Beacon Point, which is a duplex condominium development zoned under the R1B standard. While we see it's R1B, you can see the units vary, and some are smaller than what we're preparing here. And I also know this Planning Commission is very familiar with this area, and there's a development going in between '25 and '26. It's a mixed-use, has single-family, units of similar sizes and larger sizes, and also condominiums. It's a mixed-use development. So we think that this is compatible, even though it is currently zoned and master planned R1, and it gives an efficient, proper use of the property because we have the water features and wetlands on the property. We're here for any questions. You know, Mr. Snyder, I don't know if you want to add anything to what we discussed.
Yeah. Pete Snyder, Urban Land Consultants, 8800 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township, Michigan. It's good seeing you again. I don't have a lot to add. Mr. Aloya already summed it up quite well. Again, there are some... A lot of constraints on this. We have received the planners' and engineers' comments today. Again, this is a preliminary PUD, so many of those things that we would have worked out if this were a final vote would already have been worked out before you see it. But I reviewed the list, and I really don't see anything there that would scare me away from asking for an approval tonight. Again, we will schedule and coordinate with the township and with the township engineer and resolve those things, of course, before it comes back for final PUD and for eventual recommendation to the board. So with that, again, I am here for any technical questions you may have on the project, but again, it seems pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll move to the planners for their comment.
Thank you, Chair Kasali. So as far as Mr. Aloya and Mr. Snyder addressed, this is a site that's zoned R1. With the application, it indicated that it was a PUD, so I think there was... There's some clarification that's needed on this application. I understand that it's... They were trying to align this development within the developments that are surrounding it. However, we will also need a rezoning application with this. It was unclear if they were going to seek R1B with a PUD or R1C, so we'll need some clarification as far as that goes, because a rezoning application was not submitted. So based on that, you know, I mean, I know that there is wetlands on the property. There's also a creek that bisects the property. There's three ponds on the site as well, so I would leave it up to the Planning Commission and how comfortable they feel with this project. But as far as the setback goes, those are all pretty standard within the surrounding developments that were recently... That were approved in the last few years.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'll start by saying that, you know, the site is zoned R1, and you're proposing lot sizes within R1C, and I am familiar with the surrounding areas, and I have to say I'm not very fond of some of the R1C lot sizes that are built and their setbacks. It seems very crowded in those areas. So, you know, I think it's quite a jump to go from R1 to R1C, and I'd like to know, have you considered sticking more to the R1B requirements with the 90-foot lots, and what would that do to your property? And the open space, you say it has 28% open space, but that does include some of the ponds, which really aren't usable as open space to the residents. While I appreciate your well-thought-out layout of what you can fit in the land, it seems dense to me. Tell me about what you've tried to fit. Have you tried to fit R1B lot sizes, 90-foot lots, with those required setbacks of 7 and 11 feet without variances?
Yeah, we've actually done a lot of different layouts on this, up to and including some multifamily. But the issue with the 90-foot lots and the lot size, I think you've got some properties in the area that have been even more aggressive with density than this one has. This one has a... This property has an extremely significant contribution to the cost-sharing for the roads. It needs to drag utilities from the south, more than 1,000 feet, for the sanitary sewer and the water main, and extend those to neighboring properties as well with the wetlands, with the ITC corridor behind it. It just didn't seem like this was really a 90-foot lot market for what's going on here. So ultimately, the applicant said, okay, we think this is a good place in the middle. Again, we've got layouts with 70-foot lots and 60-foot lots and selections of multifamily. We've really sliced this a lot of different ways, and we've been in conversations with the township and the township planner about what other things are going on in the area, too, and we really think this is the right thing in the right place. So in as much as that is an answer, that's... Yeah, we have looked at it, and we feel this is an appropriate proposal for that piece of property.
Well, I can appreciate that. Thank you. And I guess I can stick to, you know, my views and some of the surrounding subdivisions that I think that we have maybe have to reconsider lot sizes that small and with those current setbacks. So to the fellow commissioners, anybody have opinions or questions?
I want to add one point to that.
Sure.
You know, and I understand what you're saying about the lot sizes. I think this property is unique in the sense that, you know, we will not have anyone to the west of this property. It is an ITC corridor. It is open. We do have open space on there, and understand that we use the ponds as part of the open space, which we're allowed to do, but we do have three ponds on the site, which does provide natural features, which we think are attractive with the rest of the open-space calculation. So while the lots may be smaller, we feel that the development will feel bigger.
Can you tell me what were your setbacks, your sideyard setbacks, without me digging
Yeah, 7-foot minimum, 15 total, so 7 on one side, 8 on the other, and a front 25 and a rear 40.
Yeah, those sideyard setbacks are quite small, in my opinion. So fair to say that you have 65 lots here, and if you were zoned R1B, maybe you'd have 50 larger lots. I don't know the calculation, but it would be less. know the calculation, but it would be lots, and it can be developed that way, is how I see it. So to fellow commissioners, does anybody have any input, questions?
Yes, Chairman Casali, I also agree with what you're saying. If it can be developed as a single-family lot homes, then can you prove that it could not? I mean, but you just had mentioned, Mr. Snyder, that it could be developed as single-family?
No, I don't, I don't have.
But you're proposing the R1C.
Yeah. I didn't say it could be. I just said we've done layouts on a lot of different things. So, and, and I don't remember how many, what the yield was on, on any of the scenarios that we've generated. I really don't. So, yeah, I, I don't know the net effect if you said, no, absolutely not. You have to have 90-foot lots. I don't know what the net effect would be on this site without really looking at it a lot closer than tonight.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Then I think, do we have one more question for the planners? If, now, we mentioned, if this proposal comes as a PUD, then there will be room for a cost-share agreement to the road projects in the surrounding area. And then I heard, well, if it comes back, it will be a rezoned property as R1C. And if it comes back as a rezoning request, R1C, is there still the room to negotiate for the cost-sharing of the infrastructure and roads?
If it comes back as a PUD, if they come back with a straight rezoning and no PUD, and then they'd have to adhere to those current setbacks or the R1B setbacks, and not a PUD, where we're not reducing any setbacks, then they would not have to go through the Section 1 and 2 cost-share, traffic study cost-share. If it comes in as a PUD and we are negotiating setbacks, then they would have to contribute to that agreement, the cost-share agreement for Sections 1 and 2.
Now, when it comes back at that point, is, sorry, from this point, it's going to go to the Board of Trustees with a preliminary review and our recommendation.
Correct.
And after that, let's just say it's approved. After that, the petitioner will then decide how they're going to come back, what kind of final request they're going to come back with?
Well, did you want to say something, Mary? Okay. Well, it pretty much, what they're proposing right now, they've done a lot of in-depth work already on the forefront. Typically, for a preliminary PUD, we do not look at the amount of details that they're presenting. So if, when it comes back for the final, so between the preliminary and the final, they have to get all their county permits, all their engineering done. So basically, when it comes to the final, pretty much everything is set in stone, so that we will already know, the applicant should already know what zoning classification it fits under.
Our application clearly marked preliminary PUD, so that's why we believe we're here, is for preliminary PUD review. We understand that the, the lots are under the R1C standard within that PUD application. That was our intent.
Yeah, and the PUD gives the, the planning commission leverage to negotiate some of this, those setback requirements, requirements based on the characteristics of the property, based on it being next to an ITC corridor, based on the drain along, bisecting the property. Also, there's a drain on the east, along the entire east portion of the property as well, and the southern, from what I understand, from what I've seen.
Sure. And, and just to understand something, we, we went to the township and asked them what our road contribution would be if we developed this under PUD, and, and the response was $250,000. So it's a significant cost to my client to contribute to this road fund. And I understand the concern about density, but there, there's cost prohibition to a certain extent to develop within this area because of the contributions to the road fund that the township is requiring developers to make.
I can appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that being said, I will state my opinion one more time. While I appreciate what you've come forward with, I still would rather see a PUD with more of a R1B, sticking more to R1B lot sizing. And I know with some of the surrounding areas, and maybe in my opinion, haven't, haven't made the right decisions on lot sizes after seeing how the developments have turned out. So I would stick to my, my thoughts on that and just letting you know. And any other comments from our commissioners at this point? And if not, then I will entertain a motion.
Ms. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Moore.
I would like to table this site plan 23-29 for Gary Gula, the Gula Family LLC for Greenbrier Estates for preliminary site plan, plan unit development at 1212800 26 Mile Road parcel number 23-07-02-200-029 located on the south side of 26 Mile Road, west of Shainer Road, proposing 65 single-family units. I'd like to table this to a later date to have, give the applicant a chance to reassess and give us another plan possibly for reducing the density within this development.
Support.
Motion by Moore, supported by Snyder. Roll call vote, Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So at this time, we will table the petitioner to reevaluate your existing petition.
Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, do we have any, we have no old business, new business, planning directors' report?
I don't have anything, Chair.
Nothing today. Any business from the floor, residents, anybody? Now's your time. No? All right.
Madam Chair, move to adjourn.
Thank you. Support?
Support.
Motion by Snyder, second by Moore, and do we have a roll call? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.